Everybody ready?
That's yours, right?
It is, yes, I believe it is. I'm all over the place here. I'm already starting like my desk at work looks like.
All right, so we'll go back into order. The committee, the whole meeting for the interview. We have our first interview here. Welcome Attorney Howard Greenspan.
Thank you.
I am the mayor and chair of the school committee. This is the Lynn School Committee here. And we have a series of questions that we are looking forward to sharing with you and look forward to discussing your candidacy. Thank you for your interest in the position.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the committee.
Thank you.
Anne, hi, I have the first question for you. Why do you think you or your firm would be a good fit to provide legal advice and counsel to the school committee of the Lynn Public Schools?
Well, first of all, I've been practicing for a considerable period of time, devoting much of my practice to public education law and labor relations law. I believe I'd be a good fit because I represent some communities that, such as Malden and Metford, that cities, Malden considered a gateway city. So I think there are some similarities between some of those cities and the city of Lynn that also that those clients face some of the challenges you face in providing education services to a very, very wide range of students and citizens in the city of Lynn. So I think that I'm familiar with the issues and that there are some comparisons to those cities that I represent that face the same challenges as the city of Lynn does.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have the second question. That is, and thank you for coming on. Could you tell us about your firm's experience providing legal services to school committees in urban school districts and municipalities comparable to Lynn, just like you mentioned?
Yeah, I think similar to what I said before, some of those cities have the same issues and same problems that you face in Lynn. I think by far the most experience that I have as a practitioner is in the collective bargaining area. I have looked at some of your contracts, excuse me, that have been available online. I see that you have contracts, three contracts with the AFT, teachers and parers and some specialists, occupational specialists, service specialists. I saw also that you have an administrators' union that looks like they're independent, not affiliated with anybody, and perhaps some civil service employees that I also have experience with civil service and appearing before the Civil Service Commission. I have also seen that you have a public employee committee for negotiations for health insurance purposes, and it looks like that agreement is ending from what I could tell this year. And I have also had some experience with dealing with those kinds of issues, health insurance issues, and I believe my experience would match up with some of your requirements.
I'll be taking the third question. Could you describe your firm's experience providing legal services related to personnel, labor relations, and collective bargaining in public education? I understand you just mentioned some of the obviously skills that you mentioned earlier. Could you just kind of elaborate and go deeper to some of your experiences, please?
Sure. I have negotiated over the past 30-plus years several collective bargaining agreements with teachers' unions specifically, as well as all ancillary units that would comprise the public schools, such as clerical, custodians, administrators. I've had experience in arbitrations. I took a case up to the appeals court that had some statewide impact that ruled, there was a ruling that the Education Reform Act in this particular case was the sole remedy for a teacher who was dismissed in the public schools. That particular case involved a union which challenged the dismissal under the just cause provision of the collective bargaining agreement. And we successfully argued that the statute on dismissal was the sole remedy for a teacher and there are different standards under the statute for dismissal versus the standards under just cause and collective bargaining. So I think that was a very important case that had statewide impact. And collective bargaining has been a large part of my practice for over 30-plus years.
Thank you. Could you describe your experience providing legal services related to special education, student discipline, and general school law issues, please?
Yeah, as part of my proposal, and I submitted that I have developed a relationship with Attorney Matt McAvoy, and that is part of my proposal. Attorney McAvoy was going to be here tonight but got held up in an issue out in Holyoke as he would be primarily responsible for those special education services. That is not something that I would be primarily responsible for. The resume and list of clients that he represents include Holyoke, Fall River. There are some big cities involved that he represents, so I think he would have, and his firm would have, the expertise to deal with those issues as part of this proposal. Attorney McAvoy would be primarily involved with special education, student issues, Title IX, which has recently, I'm sure, required updates for those policies. So he would be primarily involved with providing those services.
Okay, Mr. Greenspan, thank you for coming in. Next question's to me. So my question is, how would you balance having multiple clients along with the Lynn Public Schools?
Well, I think basically if I didn't think that I could provide these services to you in an effective, efficient, and prompt manner, that I wouldn't be here tonight. I wouldn't have submitted the application. I could tell from the proposal that you expect a fairly quick response time in some of these issues and some questions that come up. I could tell that from the proposal. I think an advantage that I have is that I'm, the way I got here tonight was 15 minutes. So I think that is an advantage that I have, that I do have some proximity to the city, some proximity to the school department. So I think I could do that. I think if you check with any of the clients that I have, I think in terms of accessibility, I think that they will tell you that I respond. I think I respond quickly. I think the way we all work now, maybe we all respond too quickly in seven days a week, but that's the way it is. And I think that I wouldn't be here if I didn't feel confident that I could provide you the level of service that you expect from an attorney.
Okay, and then just a little bit of a follow-up. In terms of like six different perspectives from school committee members, how do you think you could balance that in terms of having us being in touch?
Well, I think I would, I don't mind people calling, asking questions or advice. I do think that one of the ground rules is that I do not represent six individual members. I think we have to be clear that I would work for the committee as a whole and that I would need some direction before taking any steps, that I couldn't do that for an individual committee member, that there are certain rules that have to be followed and certain actions have to be taken by the committee as a whole. Notwithstanding that, while an attorney works for the school committee, there's a day-to-day relationship with the superintendent of schools. And 90% of the contact between a school attorney and a school committee is with the superintendent of schools. So I would expect that I would be able to, be able to develop that relationship with the superintendent. I would expect that we would be in touch a lot, discussing issues and, but I think it's important that everybody knows that you work for one client and not six individuals as far as taking appropriate action.
Great, thank you very much.
I'm sure you all get along, so there's no issues to that.
We do, we do, absolutely.
The last question, welcome.
Thank you.
Okay, if a school committee member received a constituent call alleging that a particular school was acting in violation of the Lynn Public School policy, and the planned action was scheduled for the following day, how would you handle the situation?
Well, I think that as a general rule, I think the first thing that I would probably do is call the superintendent in terms of chain of command and try to find out as much information as possible. In terms of what the complaint was from the parent, could you just give that to me again, a constituent?
Yeah, alleging that a particular school was in violation of the Lynn Public School policy, and the planned action was scheduled for the following day.
Well, I think it was a health and safety issue that required immediate action. I would certainly call the superintendent. And if it was a health and safety action, I would probably want the chair involved and the mayor involved in that issue. And sometimes if it's, you know, if it's a serious health and safety matter, action has to be taken in a prompt way. And certainly, action would have to be taken before a deliberation with the school committee because there would not be enough time for that to happen. So I would expect an action plan to be developed with the superintendent of schools and in this case, the chair and the mayor of the city of Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Attorney Greenspan. Is there anything that you would like to share that you have not yet had the opportunity to share? We'd welcome any comments.
Yeah, I didn't have much in terms of a prepared statement. Like I said, I did have the opportunity to review some of the agreements that are online. I think the only other thing I would say is that I know your contracts are coming up. I think from what I see, it's going to be a challenge fiscally. I think coming up with proposals, I think you're going to be faced with requests for raises that you probably haven't seen in many, many years in terms of an initial ask. I'm seeing proposals that, initial offers that I haven't seen for 30-plus years for raises. I think it's going to be a real challenge coming up between not only the cost of living that we all face, the increases, but the demands of COVID-19 and how the unions feel that their employees have been working the last year and a half under these circumstances. And I think they're going to ask for compensation packages that you haven't seen in a long time. And, you know, that's a very, very difficult balancing act for not only the committee but the mayor, who's in charge of the fiscal responsibility of the entire city. So I think that's going to be a challenge. The last couple of years have been unprecedented, unprecedented, that I've negotiated several MOAs regarding health and safety and the return to school. And I think the issues that you're going to face fiscally are going to be substantial. I don't know, haven't had the chance to really discuss what kind of relationship you have with your unions at the current time. I think it's important, what I've tried to do is develop some relationship, try to develop a relationship with the other side because it's labor relations. So as much as you can, you have to try to develop the relation aspect of the two sides. And nobody's going away. The unions aren't going away, you're not going away. So the more you can develop a relationship between the parties, I think the better off you'll be. But I think it's going to be challenging. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you.
Nice to meet you all.
And I'll have the first question. Why do you think you or your firm would be a good fit to provide legal advice and counsel to the school committee of the Lynn Public Schools?
So thank you for that question because I presume that you've looked a little bit at our background. So we specialize in municipal law, and the firm has been around since 1988 with that as its focus. I've been doing municipal law since 1998, so it's been about 23, over 23 years that I've been doing that. School committees and school districts are in fact municipal bodies. So a lot of what we do for towns or cities, we will also do for the Lynn School Committee. And we have a whole lot of experience in a broad range of subject matters that we can bring to you. Just, I noticed that you've got the Pickering Middle School project going forward. Well, we've worked with MSBA on projects from the earliest stages of the applications all the way through to the final grant paperwork and the final reimbursement, as well as dealing with issues that they arrive. Any big project, you're going to have issues with your contractors, probably, your designers. I have been doing litigation for almost 40 years, and in much of that time, I have represented companies that have had issues with construction projects. In fact, one of the things that our firm did not too long ago was deal with issues of lockers that were rusting about a year after they went in. So those are the kinds of things that you would face as a school committee with your buildings, with your structures. One of the things that we do a lot of is issues with power purchase agreements and solar panels. I know a lot of school communities are thinking of putting solar panels on their buildings, on their school buildings, or in their parking lots, and that's something that we've done a lot of. Similarly, I am experienced with small wireless facilities, one of the few in the state that does that. And a lot of communities, again, a lot of school districts are thinking of putting small wireless facilities on their buildings and getting some rent that way. Other than that, open meeting law, public records, conflict of interest, those all strike you guys, and they all need special attention, and that's something we bring. We have done it for school committees, and we've done it so we're aware of the FERPA rules. Finally, I'll let Alex speak because she's got some unique experience that you won't hear from anybody else. But I will tell you that I have represented school administrators who have needed either no trespassing orders or harassment protection orders from parents who have gotten out of control in really threatening and serious ways. And unfortunately, I think that's something that the committee, like a lot of committees around the country, has to be concerned about because it seems in particular to be happening a fair amount. I could go on, but I want you to hear from Alex and her particular expertise.
Thank you, Donna, and thank you, everybody, for having us. As Donna was saying, we can do all of the usual school things like public records, conflict of interest. We can do employee handbooks, labor and employment issues, work with unions, work with management, employee discipline. But one of the reasons why I was very interested in applying to be school counsel is that I noticed, when the RFP came out, I did a little bit of Google research, and I noticed that you have a very prolific student health service and student health-based clinic. And I, prior to my joining me at Harrison Harrington about three years ago, I was deputy general counsel at the Mass Department of Public Health, and I was the attorney who worked with the school health unit. And so I would work on all of the regulations and programs and statutes pertaining to school health in public schools in Massachusetts. So everything from immunizations to medication management, medication administration management, expert in various physical screenings, substance use disorder screenings. And I was also the state, one of the state pandemic prep lawyers. So this has been a very interesting experience for me to go from working on state pandemic prep and state emergency preparedness to working with municipalities and their committees on various issues pertaining to COVID and isolation and quarantine and the various guidance documents that I feel like come out every single week with the little, you know, minutia changes from DPH and DESI. And I've been working closely with my colleagues at DPH, my former colleagues at DPH, and keeping abreast of the changes through various DPH, DESI conference calls that go on a couple times a week. And so I feel like in this position, I would be very well-versed to help you in a way that perhaps other lawyers just don't have that particular experience. You know, the school-based health clinics are, it creates a situation where you need to comply with very strict confidentiality laws, and it's quite unique from just the regular school nurse office that so many of our municipal clients have. And I just thought that that was like a really interesting connection to my previous work as well.
Thank you. I'll have the, I'll ask the second question. Could you tell us about your firm's experience providing legal services to school committees in urban school districts comparable to Lynn? Can you give, go a little further, give us some details or some examples?
So the firm doesn't have experience with urban school districts, just with school districts in general. I think Lynn offers a unique opportunity for us to combine what we know about school districts generally with the needs of Lynn in particular. But Alex's background is with urban school districts and can talk more about that.
So I, again, when I was at DPH, I worked closely with some of our programs that brought medical services into urban schools. So one of the programs, I can think off the top of my head, was the dental seal program, and it was a program where we had to negotiate contracts with the school district, you know, via the superintendent and the mayor's office, I'm thinking of one city in particular. And what that program does is it brings public health dental hygienist into school. So it's a similar vein to school-based health clinics, but it's bringing the dental hygienist into the schools. They set them up with a spot, and they pull the students out of class and give them cleanings, give them sealants, referrals to dentists in the area. And it's a really great way to be able to give students access to dental care that they otherwise might not be able to get, you know, because their parents or guardians are working during the day and they just can't get to the dentist during open hours. And so I've negotiated those types of agreements. And again, all of the various confidentiality and, yeah, the health law confidentiality issues surrounding them.
Hello, I'll be asking the third question. Could you describe your, you and your firm's experience providing legal services related to personnel, labor relations, and collective bargaining in public education?
We're very strong in experience with collective bargaining agreements, unions, negotiations, grievances, all that process. We also are very familiar with civil service. We have drafted personnel handbooks. We have done investigations of harassment and discrimination complaints. I have litigated some of those. And in, often though, when you get to the level of litigation at the municipal level, then insurance defense council comes in, and so I typically will work with them on that, on that issue. Did I forget a part?
You want me to repeat the question just so you can, so I said, could you describe?
Sure, I'll make sure I get it.
Let me just repeat it.
Sure.
Just so you could get a fair shot. Could you describe your firm's experience providing legal services related to personnel, labor relations, and collective bargaining in public education?
Yeah, I think, I think we've covered all that I've done. Not only have we, I worked on unions that have involved teachers and supervisors and, as well as other municipal officials, whether it's police officers or firefighters or DPW workers. But one of the things I've also done is negotiated agreements for union workers to be shared between the school district and the municipality itself so that, you know, DPW workers would do snow plowing, for example, of the school district property as well as regular city-and-town parking lots, that kind of thing. So those kinds of agreements that cover both your needs and the city's needs are things that I'm familiar with.
Thank you. Could you describe your firm's experience providing legal services related to special education, student discipline, and general school law issues?
Want to take that?
Sure. Well, as we had mentioned in our response, we don't, we do not handle special education. It's just not something that we typically provide services for. In terms of general school issues, it runs the gamut. You know, we get questions all the time about FERPA and public records and the student record law and how those all play together. You know, for example, right now, I'm working with a school district that has a public record situation. It started as just a regular public records issue. Parent of student A wanted very specific information coming from student B's records. It was a targeted request, and we cited the various FERPA regulations and things. And now it's been modified to include all bullying information. And so we're, we're working closely with the superintendent and the assistant superintendent and the records access officer to go through all the various issues and see if we can redact in such a way that we can protect the confidentiality of everybody or if we have to continue down this targeted request process. So we get issues pertaining to FERPA, student records, personnel issues, issues pertaining to affinity groups, issues pertaining to, like I said, school health issues, particularly now that we're in year two. I've lost track of time.
We're starting the year three.
We're starting, we're starting year three? Okay. Now that we're two years into COVID, so we've been dealing a lot of issues with not just testing and student health issues, but also the contracts pertaining to testing services and contracts pertaining to the labs where the testing services are going to, et cetera, confidentiality agreements. We do permission slip waivers. We do all sorts of waivers for schools and field trips. And if students are being transported to athletic events, either on the bus or, you know, via like their friend's car or their parent, friend's parent's car, we've had issues with respect to various contracts that schools enter into. So for example, at the height of COVID, COVID started in March, May, and June was a very popular prom season, like prom and end of year banquets and things like that. So we had to work with the school district to get out of those contracts because some hotels and some various service providers were willing to say like, yep, this is an unprecedented thing, we'll let you out of your contract. Others were not. They were holding quite firm, so we had to work through that process to get them out of their contracts and get their deposits back and things like that. So we, we have employee discipline issues, we have reasonable accommodation issues, we have, like Donna was saying, handbooks and review of union agreements. And it's, we have quite a breadth of experience pertaining to all sorts of issues with municipality committees, including school districts.
Specifically on student discipline, I wanted to go back to that because if you're involving your lawyers and your lawyers in student discipline, then probably you're looking at a lawsuit, because typically, student discipline is dealt with by the principal or the assistant principal. Typically, the assistant principal, I think, has that job. That being said, I was involved in litigation involving a case of student discipline through my service as a member of the board of the Lawyers of Civil Rights. And this was a case that made the news a few years ago of two young women who were suspended from school because of their hair, that the school thought was not appropriate under the school dress code. And I was a part of the, I still am, part of the organization that represented the students against the school district to get that policy changed. So that's where I say, when you're getting that far and getting your lawyers involved, you're looking at litigation.
Okay, thank you. I have the next question. Thank you for coming tonight. So how would your firm manage having multiple staff representatives working with the same client? You live in public schools, obviously, in this case.
That's our bread and butter.
Okay.
We do it. We have 11 lawyers in the firm, and most of our clients will call up any one of us to deal with an issue. So, yeah, that's, honestly, I think you'll get that answer from everybody you talk to today.
Okay, and then, so just beyond like a point of contact, would there be someone consistent that would show up at the committee meetings or, you know, just we'd be interfacing with?
Yep, so as our proposal had mentioned, that Donna and I would be the two attorneys. Donna would be lead, I'd be primary backup counsel. But as Donna was saying, all of our attorneys are available to you if you were to go with our firm. And just as an example, let's say that there was an issue pertaining to a procurement situation, right? Either procurement gone bad, or, you know, you're going to need to go out for procurement. We have a procurement specialist, and we would probably put you in contact with her. And so she would be your contact for that particular issue. Donna and I would keep track of it. We have team meetings every other week about all of our municipal clients, so that way the lead councils are kept aware of what's going on, and we can delegate work appropriately, or we can let someone know, you know, there's a land use issue, there's going to be a real, there's going to be a school building that's going to be going on for sale, things like that. And we can divvy out the work, so we have an idea, it goes to the appropriate person who has the best background in that particular area. So it saves you money, it saves everyone time, and it gets you the specialists that you need to work with really, really quickly. And so that's our process for all of our municipal clients.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, the last one. If a school committee member received a constituent call alleging that a particular school was acting in violation of the Lynn Public School policy, and the planned action was scheduled for the following day, how would you or your firm handle this situation?
I think one of the things our firm is really known for is being responsive. You get our cell phone numbers and our direct dial numbers. So if you need something answered quickly, we're going to give it to you. As for, you know, a constituent who's calling up a school committee member, honestly, the first thing that jumped to my mind was, well, is this something really that the school committee members should be getting involved in individually? Or is this something that needs to go back to the school's administration, the superintendent of schools even at that level, or just staying with the principal? But one thing I've become aware of is people will try to involve school committee members in things that really should be left to the administration of the district.
Thank you.
Wonderful. Well, we want to give you an opportunity to share any comments that you have that we haven't already covered so far in the interview.
Let's see. Oh, one thing I wanted to talk about a little bit, because I think this is coming up with a lot of school committees, as well as municipalities, is the whole thing about mask mandates and vaccine mandates, and whether you need religious exemptions or medical exemptions. Is there a difference between the treatment of volunteers or employees, that kind of thing? Kind of a big topic to go into right now, but I'll invite you all. I don't know if you were planning to go to the MMA Annual Conference, it got canceled last weekend, but I am speaking on that topic, as well as other topics, as part of an update on municipal law, and I'm doing that a week from today at noon. All of the MMA conferences and workshops are free now, and even if you can't hear me speak at that, I've been doing it now for several years, you can get the materials for free, and then you can get caught up on what I will be presenting, what the latest is on all the litigation that's going through, especially at the, in this state, specifically on vaccine and mask mandates. So that's something I think everybody actually is interested in. We're familiar with Title VII and Title IX issues. And again, to emphasize the experience that both Alex and I have with employment and labor issues, any kind of impact bargaining, that, again, that's one of the things I'll touch on, on the vaccine and mask mandates, that's all in that topic. Discrimination and harassment, again, you know, it just, it is everywhere, and it is something that both Alex and I are experienced in investigating, litigating, defending, drafting responses to demand letters, whatever it might be. Of course, we're quite familiar with the Mass Tort Claims Act and the protections that go to municipal boards and committees and the district through that. School resource officers, we haven't really talked about that. We know that the law changed so that they're no longer required in schools, but to the extent that you have them, I have worked with school committees and police departments together to ensure that the intermunicipal agreement that is brought up between the two departments is something that complies with the current law. Alex?
Just to add to what Donna was saying about her presentation and training, Donna gave a great example of her presenting at the MMA, but I just wanted to say, generally, we are happy to come to any municipality and do trainings. We frequently do them for our clients on public records management, open meeting law, conflicts of interest, and any other topic that might be of interest to you. We can certainly put together a training. Donna did one recently on investigations and the proper way to do investigations. Another thing that you should know about our firm is that we're very, we want to keep our clients educated about the law and changes to the law. And so what we do is every month, we have a newsletter that we publish, and it's articles pertaining to interesting cases or new developments in terms of guidance coming out from the state on various things, like, for example, if DLS puts out a new guidance document, or if, you know, the DPH DESI guidance documents, which change every week, we provide updates on those, we provide updates on cases coming out of the SJC or the Supreme Court. And if there's a situation that warrants it, then we send out these flash client alerts that would, it would prevent you from waiting the full month to get information about it. You would get it same day or next day as this particular situation arises. So for example, again, at the height of COVID, when the governor was, I feel like, putting out executive orders every day, and they were very different than the day before, we would constantly be sending out client alerts to make sure that our clients were aware of the various situational changes.
If you're interested, you can see examples of what these newsletters and client alerts look like on our website. They're all there, they're all available, and they're searchable. They also have a monthly trivia question. We have a shout out to the one who gets the answer right first.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so much for your interest. It was wonderful to meet you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Tim, I have the first question. Why do you think that you would be a good fit to provide legal advice and counsel to the school committee of the Lynn Public Schools?
Thank you. First, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to be here. Congratulations to you, Mr. Mayor, you and your family on your election, as well as everybody else on the school committee. I have been a practicing attorney for over 25 years, and I am currently general counsel for an organization that represents multiple employers in the areas of employment, unemployment, labor relations, human resource, legal areas. I have worked with the organization, started as a staff attorney, I worked my way up through general counsel. I know that, I'm putting my application in today, and it's not a classic application, I think, that you would see for a role like this. However, I think if you look at my combined legal background and my work experience, and you put it together, it should be a qualifying candidacy. I have practiced law in front of the district court, the superior court, the appellate court. I'm licensed to practice in federal district court. I have literally participated in hundreds of administrative law hearings in front of the MCAD, the DUA, the IAB, the LRB, the BSEA. I have participated in numerous mediations and arbitrations. I also maintain a private law practice in covering the same exact areas, which I've done throughout my career. I have negotiated a wide range of contracts. I am an adjunct professor at Endicott College, teaching in the areas of human resources, laws, and compliance. On top of that, I'm from Lynn. I think most people know that from my application. Born and raised in the city of Lynn, I still live in the city of Lynn. I went to the Lynn Public School System and graduated from Lynn English High School. I don't want to tell you what year. And I do want to jump in and just thank everybody. I don't think I've ever been to a setting where I've been called to come early as opposed to come late, so you're doing something right. You know, I think being from Lynn and for my whole life, I was a former elected official for 22 years, served on this committee, as well as the Lynn City Council. I think it gives me a unique perspective on top of my legal background as to how the city of Lynn, what the people are like, how the city of Lynn, in a sense, operates, understand the needs that members of the school committee have when maybe a constituent or a parent calls you and you need, you know, some type of very quick legal advice to maybe answer that question. I've been in that position, and I understand that. I do think that that's a valuable asset to have for both the administration and the school committee. I would be very accessible, being local. If you wanted to meet and have a cup of coffee on a Saturday, I'd be happy to do it. If you want me to come over to your house at 9:30 at night, I'd be happy to do it. You know, my guess is if I'm fortunate enough to obtain this position, that we would most likely bump into each other at local events, at Manning Field or Walgreens, and I'd be happy to, you know, dispense any legal advice that you'd like to have, you know, at the time. You know, I look at this role as more than just a job. You know, I look at this role as a form of public service for, to a city that I love. And I take it, you know, very seriously. I think that this position, there's a lot of, you know, responsibility and accountability to this board, to the administration, to the public, and the law. And I appreciate your consideration and having me here tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll have, I'll ask the second question. Thank you for coming. Could you tell us about your experience providing legal services to school committees in urban districts and municipalities compared to Lynn?
Sure. So in the organization that I work with now, well, we represent a wide range of people. We represent a number of large urban districts in the western part of the state. One of the things that I do for them on a day-to-day basis is real-time consulting. If something is happening in a school, if something is happening in the municipality, and they want it, what do we do? You know, because that's real life. It's, you know, I'm a big believer in, you know, best way to keep down anybody's costs, whether it's a municipality's costs, you know, labor costs, is to try to prevent a problem from happening before it happens. Regardless of how good somebody's attorney may or may not be, you know, after, you know, a separation of employment occurs, you're stuck with that set of facts. But if you can do something to save somebody's job, if you can actually incorporate language into some type of warning and compliance with a collective bargaining agreement, and you can save that person's job, then everybody is, you know, is going to benefit when it comes to that. I write employee handbooks, codes of conduct, sexual harassment policies, bullying policies, you know, substance abuse policies, drug and alcohol policies, social media policies. You know, they constantly need to be tweaked. Everybody is, policies are constantly evolving with society. You know, it's something that I'm, you know, very, you know, passionate about when it comes to that. And, you know, and I think that I've been successful in doing that.
Thank you.
I have the third question, and thank you for stopping by tonight, Tony Phelan. So I just want to, and I know you briefly described some of these different skill sets, but I'm going to go just through the question. Could you describe your experience providing legal services related to personnel, labor relations, and collective bargaining in public education? I think you answered, you touched upon a few of those, but could you just kind of dive deep into those three?
Sure. So let's talk about collective bargaining. You know, I have a, I think, a unique background when it comes to negotiating contracts. My first experience was actually, you know, on this committee. It was at a time, I was very young when I was on the committee, and I was on the committee before Ed Reform and after Ed Reform, at the same time a collective bargaining agreement was being negotiated. It was being negotiated at the time by the same school committee attorney that recently passed. I worked with him hand in hand, you know, and I was a pretty active participant. When I got to the council, I wasn't at the collective bargaining table, but I worked with the mayor and many union heads and had many heated discussions, you know, in a sense, as a liaison between, you know, the mayor, and I had many heated discussions with the late mayor at the time, but always able to work something out. You know, right now, in the position that I have, I do a substantial amount of collective bargaining, contractual language drafting, interpretation of contractual language, explanation to the bodies during collective bargaining. I also, for the organization that I work with, I am the sole and the lead negotiator for all the contracts that we deal with. I have successfully negotiated numerous contracts, including two times successive contracts with a, you know, a national airlines, also three successive contracts with an international bank based out of Europe that is well-known in the United States. The, I think that my philosophy when it comes to negotiating will transcend, in a sense, all types of negotiation and all types of contracts, and that's one of relationship building. I think that no one, one shoe doesn't fit all when it comes to negotiating, but my style, I think, has been very successful. And I think a good way to explain it is, you know, diversity is a very important topic in today's society. And, you know, you can have a diverse team, but without inclusion, it really won't work. So I think that anybody, all the stakeholders when it comes to negotiating, you know, have to, their perspective and their opinions have to be valued, and the people have to be valued, whether it's, it is the school committee, the administration, teachers, paris, whomever it may be. And I know the upcoming contract negotiations are going to be a very important part of, you know, this role in the future. But I think more than just being valued, they have to feel valued. And, you know, that's a very different thing. And I think you do that not by searching for consensus, but more trying to mold consensus. And I think that really is inclusion, and that's been, you know, successful for me. I recently had dealt with a collective bargaining issue in the school department with an issue of, let's see, Chapter 71, 41, non-renewal notices that are sent to non-professional status teachers. There was a reduction in force at the time, so there were, you know, some teachers that also received notices because of the reduction in force. This was two or three years ago. And they were really substantially confused, because that happened before June 15th, but after June 15th, prior to the end of the school year, they received a letter, a reasonable assurance letter, which is a letter under Mass General Law 151A, Section 28A, which is sent to employees of educational institutions, so that they're not eligible to collect unemployment during shutdown periods of the summer. So there was a So there was an issue that arose, how can you lay us off, non-renew us on this day, and then reasonably assure us of a position in the fall on that day? And it does appear to be a conflict, but the statutory interpretations of the law, it became apparent to me that the person on the other side of the table really just didn't understand it. And, you know, I've been in negotiations where people will embarrass somebody because they don't know, they don't know something, and I don't think that's a successful formula. You know, I've been in front of judges that sometimes, you know, missed the boat, and the last thing you do is you want to, you know, put them on the carpet if you want to, call them to the carpet if you want to be successful. So I was able during that process to make them understand how the actual, it's not an offer of employment. It won't prevent them from collecting unemployment, but what he was threatening at the time, the municipality was going to have, I think there were 37 people, there were going to be 37 separate administrative law hearings, the cost of the municipality, he wanted it in the collective bargaining agreement, but you couldn't do it statutorily. And what ended up happening is finally I was able to get him to understand that if the people didn't have a job in the fall, that they would be eligible to collect unemployment retroactively to the last day of school, which he didn't realize at the time. So, you know, it's just working with people and understanding, you know, the concerns that they have, and they were all valid concerns, to try to be successful. I didn't mean to go on so long, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, thank you, thank you.
Hi. Could you describe your experience providing legal services related to special education, student discipline, and general school law issues, please?
Sure. All right, so we'll start with special ed. The, I have a kind of a soft spot, and I'll tell you why and admit it, for special education. You know, anybody that has a, you know, a physical or a, you know, a mental impairment that substantially limits one or more major life activities is entitled to, you know, free and appropriate public education, FAP. And, you know, it's the responsibility of, I think everybody here knows, of the school department to, you know, make sure that there is a IEP in place that is identified specifically for that child to reasonably, so it's reasonably calculated for effective and meaningful educational progress. And it sounds easy to do, but it's not. You know, it has to be done in the least restrictive environment. And when you're dealing with special education, you know, the school department has responsibilities, and they want to make sure that people are getting properly educated and that they're reaching their educational potential, both academically, but also socially and emotionally. But there's a financial cost that comes with the school department, whether it's trying not to have an outside placement and/or, you know, putting services or making sure that the people in the school, that the parents will understand that we provide those services here. So all of that being said, it gets very complex and very complicated because, and I'm sure you know this, because every case is different. Every child is different, every diagnosis is different, and every IEP is different. And, you know, I recently, not recently, well, before the pandemic, dealt with a case where parents rejected the evaluation done by a school system, and they wanted to have an independent evaluation done. And the independent evaluation, they, the school department gave them two or three names to get the evaluation with, they were still in discussions, and they wanted to have their person, the specific person, do the independent evaluation. And it was very expensive, and the school department didn't want to pay for it. They didn't meet the income eligibility requirements at the time. So there was an impasse, and being very candid with you, I represented the parents at the time, and there was an impasse, and it started going towards the direction of the Board of Special Education Appeals, and they have a resolution program in place. And, you know, the school department would have to show that it is a comprehensive and appropriate evaluation. And, you know, the parents, I met with the parents, I reviewed the evaluation, and it looked good to me. You know, they had a couple minor things that they said weren't evaluated, but then what they showed me, something that was very surprising. They showed me two separate evaluations from different students that had occurred the year, a couple of years before, that they had got their hands on, they were redacted from a local advocate, from the same psychologist and the same school department. And I would say 75% or 80% of the evaluations done by the school department, it was boilerplate. The language was literally cut and pasted. And that kind of really changed the trajectory of, you know, where the case was actually going. So going in front of the Board of Special Education Appeals, which fortunately this did not happen, you would have an evidentiary issue, an admissibility issue of the other documents. And I don't, they had not brought the school department, this to the school department's attention, so I did. And, you know, and they didn't admit it at the time, but I think that they weren't very comfortable with the evaluations. So what ultimately we were able to do was, with a little understanding of the law, because, you know, I told the people that I was representing that, you know, there's no guarantee if you go to the next level. You really want to try to work things out amicably. And we ultimately negotiated that the school department would use a different psychologist, do an evaluation internally, would not see the prior evaluation, would not be, and would only be told that, hey, there was an issue with, you know, just rubber stamping and boilerplating. And they ultimately got a new evaluation, and they were very happy with it. The IEP placement went forward, and they were successful. I also, you know, I, you know, I anticipated that you would ask questions about special education tonight, and I debated back and forth, you know, whether I should, you know, touch base on a certain aspect of this topic, and I think it's important, and I wanted to. I was actually thrown into this area unexpectedly. When my son was under the age of three, he was diagnosed with being on the autistic spectrum with pervasive development disorder, PDD. I don't even think they use the term now. And they, and it was really, it threw me back, and he was on an IEP straight through the time of his entire educational life. I became a, not only a father, but I would say a passionate advocate for him going through this process. I think maybe people on the other side would describe me a little differently going through the process, but it was very challenging. And the special ed director at the time looked me square in the eye, and, you know, when my son was three years old and said, "PDD is an overused term." And, you know, and we never really, you know, as best I tried, we never really got along. But over the course of, you know, his life, I have rejected IEPs, I have accepted IEPs, I have rejected partial IEPs. You know, and it's very challenging because when you're trying to define what a least restrictive environment, substantially separate classroom, whatever that may be, you're dealing with so many multiple factors. Student-teacher ratio, you know, who else is in the classroom? What are the disabilities of other people? Do you have a right to know what the other disabilities are? Do they impact your son's development or somebody else's child's development, which they have a right to succeed as well? You know, some kids learn visually, some kids learn auditorily, and these are all complex factors moving forward. And, but, you know, they served me well, and I've become, I've worked both sides of the table when it comes to these issues.
Would you like to say anything else about student discipline or general school law?
Sure. Student discipline, a couple of issues that I've recently come up with is, not come up with, but with social activism. What seems to be popular are students who will stage a walkout and demonstrate. And technically, it's a violation of your discipline code or your attendance policy, and the issue arises, should you actually discipline, you know, those children? Do you have the right to do it? Absolutely. In loco parentis, you know, it's been, the Supreme Court has, you know, supported that since the 1700s up through in the past six months. You have the ability to do that, but do you want to? You know, you can't, you can't actually discipline anybody if they do that for the content of their political views or whatever they're protesting at the time. But those are, that's a common issue that's not a common, but has arisen recently. Another is masks. You know, the, there was a recent case where a group, I can't remember what they called the Freedom Parents, I think they were called, I probably have that wrong, filed for a preliminary injunction against the DESI and a number of school districts to try to prevent the mask mandate. They lost. However, you know, what if somebody in the school district doesn't want, a single person doesn't want to wear a mask? You know, there have been a number of, you know, legal analysis done that, as I think as you know, it's your responsibility, the school department's responsibility to, and the superintendent's responsibility, to have rules and regulations in place and discipline in place, and make sure that there is, you know, it is a rule, it's actually recommended, I'm sure you've done it, to have mask wearing as part of our, you know, our policies, the handbook in the school system. You know, the legal recommendation, don't put any consequences in there because, you know, there could be, everybody is, as I said earlier, it's different for every single person. But, you know, those are the common issues that are going on now.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Attorney Phelan. So my question is, how would you balance having multiple clients as the Lynn School Department being one of them?
Sure. You know, if I was fortunate enough to obtain this position, you would not be one of many. You would be the sole organization that I would be representing. You would be my priority. I do not think that would be an issue whatsoever. So, sorry to speak so long, and the other questions are so short on yours.
No, that's okay, that's fine. That's all right. But just a little follow-up. How might you handle, you know, the different perspectives of school committee members that are calling you or wanting to have a cup of coffee, as you mentioned?
Sure. Well, I think everybody's opinion is valuable, you know, and I think that, you know, my role is to, would be to educate when it comes to the law. You know, obviously, I couldn't take any, I wouldn't recommend any action. I mean, if you needed a vote of the school committee, you know, I would be representing the school committee, not individual people, but, you know, everybody's opinion is valuable. And what I find is, once people become aware of what the law is, because what makes common sense and what makes legal sense are really often very, two very different things. And, you know, once people become aware of that, you know, it's, you know, I think people usually can get through that. So I think everybody's opinion is valuable. I think it's, it would be easy to work through something like that. You know, obviously, communicating, the best way to be successful is working together as a body, something that I would recommend and encourage.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for coming. Last question. If a school committee member received a constituent call alleging that a particular school was acting in violation of Lynn Public School policy, and the planned action was scheduled for the following day, how would you handle this situation?
Well, one, I would be available. Two, I think it really would depend upon, you know, what the actual violation of the policy was and how that actually is handled. I mean, obviously, if there was a policy violation, you wanted to immediately stop and you want to correct it. I, you know, within the past year, I had a case where a, a couple of middle school students, girls, went to a teacher, and they showed a teacher a, some Snapchat posts of another girl making fun of another girl. And it was no vulgarity or obscenity, but they took pictures from the girl's social media someplace, they weren't pictures that were done in school, and they wrote on it, loser, and eats lunch alone at school, nobody likes her at school, and all these school references. It was pretty bad. And, you know, and the teacher looked at it, and the teacher said, hey, listen, there are no threats here, it didn't happen at school, you know, it didn't happen with school property, you know, even though it's wrong, there's nothing that I can do about it, and I think you guys should tell her to stop, you know, when I see her, I'll tell her to stop as well. Ultimately, the kids didn't really feel comfortable with that, and they went to somebody else, I think a VP, and they told the VP. Now, this person went through, you know, cyber training. That's a violation of your cyberbullying policy or your bullying policy. And, you know, even though his, I don't think he was anything ill-intended, he was misinformed. And, you know, upon a review of the district's cyberbullying policy, you know, they say you can't cyberbully, but one of the things that's very advantageous in policies is to actually put specific examples in what is considered cyberbullying, you know, so that people can have that thought process and they can, you know, understand what it's really like. And, you know, so that was an issue that we dealt with, and there was a teacher issue, then it turned into a student discipline issue. And, you know, there was a case, I mean, it's off-campus, online activity can be regulated by a school if it impacts the well-being or safeguard or self-esteem of students in the school system. And that was a clear, he needed to be reeducated, he was retrained, you know, there was, they even had, I think they ultimately did an assembly at the school. You know, so that's an example of a policy violation. Another policy violation, more on the administrative side, you know, temporary, temporary, I think it's, temporary emergency paid sick leave came out about a year ago, was just extended until April 1, where municipal and all employees are able to, if you have COVID symptoms, you get COVID, you're entitled to $850 for the week, and there are employer notifications, you have to post that. But there are some criteria that was in there, and an HR director in a school system immediately came out and they posted it, and what they posted, they said, "We recommend that you use your available sick time first." And the law specifically prohibits that. You know, you can't force them to do it amongst other things, and you, obviously, they weren't forcing, but you shouldn't even be recommending. You know, they can double dip if they want, they could take their vacation time on top of that paid sick line, that's their paid sick time. The second thing that happened was the administration, you're entitled to a level of reimbursement. And, but you, if somebody took vacation time and the paid emergency, temporary emergency paid sick leave at the same time, you would only get reimbursement for the numbers, for the sick leave numbers, and they started to put in requests for the vacation, you know, both, and not entitled to it. So there was administrative new law that came out that needed some clarification on that issue.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I just ask a follow-up?
Sure, yes.
I just, on the one you said, the organization you work for, and it represents a large urban district, and you do the real-time consulting?
Yes.
Are you able to share what urban district that would be?
Sure. It's, well, a couple of them, one's Holyoke, one's Springfield. The, and I deal with the Director of Labor Relations on a weekly basis, the head of Human Resources, you know, we constantly have interaction when it comes to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, thank you, Attorney Phelan. Now, an opportunity to share any comments you have that you didn't have a chance to raise in the prior questions.
Sure. You know, another thing that I do, I've, you know, I've taught seminars, and I've spoken at, you know, multiple organizations, the Employees Association of the Northeast, Law and Educational Services, Massachusetts Association of School Business Officials. I think Mr. McHugh might have been at one of those years ago down the Cape, I think. I can't remember. You know, it's part of what I do, so my, my background is, I think, unique and not classic, but I think it does fit the needs that the school committee is looking for. And I appreciate the opportunity to be in front of you tonight, so thank you.
Thank you so much, Attorney Phelan. Thank you for your interest, and thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Attorney Phelan.
Yeah.
Hi, thanks.
Good evening. It's always fun to walk into a room of masked people. Thank you very much for taking us a little bit early tonight. This actually worked out great for us. We were actually sitting outside when I got Mary's email saying that you were running ahead of time, so it was kind of kismet right there, you know? My name's Michael Macaro. I'm one of the three people that we have with us tonight from Murphy- from Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lahane. With me, I have my partner Mary Ellen Saworda and Venetia Sau, so that's who we are.
Thank you so much, and thank you for coming. I am Mayor Jared Nicholson and Chair of the School Committee, and we really appreciate your interest in the position and coming here to speak with us this evening. And my, my colleagues on the School Committee will each have a question to share with you, and then we'll have time at the end for you to share any kind of comments that you have, that you didn't get a chance to with the course of the question. So thank you again for, for being here.
That sounds great.
And I have the first question for you. Why do you think that your firm would be a good fit to provide legal advice and counsel to the School Committee of the Lynn Public Schools?
Sure. I guess I'll, I'll start off on that one right here, and then I can turn it over to Mary Ellen. So, MHTL has been in existence for well over 30 years. I think we take pride in the fact that we represent both public sector and private sector clients in all kinds of matters. But when it comes to education law, I think we represent more school clients when you consider our regular education, special education, and special counsel than any other firm in the state. I think our clientele ranges from large school districts like yourself, we represent Brockton, Quincy, and the city of Methuen for school districts, as well as some smaller school districts like Swambskett, Trittown School Union close by, Triton north from here, Wilmington, I mean, you name it, there's not a type of district that we don't for, like, regular education. When it comes to special education, which my partner Mary Ellen is really the guru here, also represents several districts similar to Lynn. We have, you know, Somerville, Springfield, Swambskett, I know that she does.
Yep, Malden, let's see, Medford, a number of districts in, in, in close proximity to Lynn, and also districts that are of your size, as well as, as Mike said, also smaller districts. So I'll, I'll wait until you're done.
Yeah, I mean, so, I mean, I think what, you know, it's great to tell you that we represent all kinds of districts, but I think what you really want to hear from us is that we love what we do, all right? All of our attorneys in our education practice group do this because this is what we've chosen to do. We've done it for years, we know that individuals like yourself that serve on school committees, and even those that are work for the district, you are truly trying to do what's best for your district. And what we try to do is work with those clients and give them the tools that they need to help implement what they're trying to do. It's something that we enjoy, it's our chosen profession, and I think would be a good fit.
Sure, yeah, I would echo what Mike said, I don't want to speak too long because if, you each have a question, it'll be midnight by the time we get out. But, no, we, I would just echo particularly what Mike said about, this is, I, this is my, my, my chosen career field for life, I've been doing this for a little over 30 years myself, with the same firm all that time, and just thoroughly enjoy working with school districts of all sizes, helping folks solve problems, really trying to build collaboration in the special ed world between parents and districts. I'd much rather help folks resolve something amicably than litigate, but obviously if we need to litigate cases, that's what we do. But it's just an enjoyable practice, it's an enjoyable area of work, and, and we're delighted to have Venetia with us as well. I should let you talk for a minute before.
Yeah, definitely. So as, to continue on what Mary Ellen just spoke about, you know, from, from my point, perspective, as well as our entire special ed department, it's really all about collaboration if we can, and trying, trying to resolve matters amicably. But again, if not, then litigation, we're very much prepared to do that. I've been with the firm for close to three years now, and my entire career has focused on special education and education. So it's definitely an area that we are both versed in as a firm.
I might also mention that many years ago, not so many years ago, but several years ago, maybe 15 years ago, I actually was legal counsel for the Lynn Public Schools. Maybe it's more than 15 years, you lose track, but Mar, Marlene Potter was the Director of Special Education. It's going, I know that I'm dating myself, but I did, I did, for at least a dozen years, I worked with Marlene, she was wonderful, I loved working with the folks at Lynn. Interesting work, really dedicated, caring educators, and I know that continues to be the case. So, so, so I have some historical knowledge of working with the district, and it was an excellent experience.
And, and actually, Venetia actually worked sort of on the other side for a lot here in Lynn, so she's very familiar with the district, she's got a unique perspective.
Yes, yes, indeed. As an attorney who represented students a few years back, I worked at a local legal service agency here, so I'm very familiar with Lynn Public Schools. I imagine that many of the special education staff that I worked with back then are still here, and so I would know many of those teachers and professionals and even special education leadership staff that were there, and I'm sure they're here now. In addition to that, I'm very familiar with the special education programs in the district as well, particularly the programs for the younger students, those students with developmental delays, as well as those with social, emotional challenges as well. So a lot of the substantially separate programs, as well as your in-district school as well, factually. So, I worked for over two years in that capacity, and I worked with special education staff in Lynn throughout that entire time. I'm sure if they heard my name, they would know me well, and they would say good things, I hope.
They wouldn't go running?
No, they would not go running.
I'm not surprised.
I don't think.
Thank you. Well, hi, I'll be asking a second question. I know you already touched, elaborated on some of these, but can you tell us more, more about your firm's experience providing legal services to school committees in urban districts, and, you know, that are comparable to Lynn, but can you give us a little more examples? You know, I know you mentioned Springfield and some stuff.
Yeah, so I think probably the most similar to yours is Brockton. We represent the city of Brockton in all of their general education matters. We have done so for, might be 30-plus years.
Yeah, I think so.
It's one of our, what I'll call, one of our legacy clients, which we really pride ourselves on, the fact that we've got longstanding relationships with a number of our clients. So, they've got about 16,000 students, which I think is pretty much right around the number of yours, so I don't think you can get more similar in terms of districts. Up here on, you know, north of Boston, I'm, I'm from north of Boston, so I always think north of Boston, south of Boston. We've got the city of Methuen, same thing, another one of our legacy clients that we've been representing. They're a little bit smaller, but they have some of the same sort of issues that I think that are probably facing the city of Lynn here. You know, those are some of the, in the city of Quincy, you know, our firm is mainly located right in the city of Quincy, and again, we've been doing them for years. So there's a little bit, not as big as Brockton or Methuen, but, so we're very familiar with, you know, dealing with school districts that have a large number of students, lots of schools, multiple unions with large teacher unions, so, I mean, all things that we face and we deal with on a regular basis. When it comes to the special ed, you know, Mary Ellen, at least you can tell you about some of the larger districts too that are very similar, so.
Yeah, and one other district that I actually should have mentioned when we were talking about districts that we do near, close to Lynn is Revere. And when you asked the question, I, for some reason, I thought of a conversation I had with the Revere Special Ed Director a while ago, which was to say that in larger urban districts, not that Revere is the largest, but we do have, you know, obviously, that's, that's a model of what I want to say. I think there really is greater advocacy for students and awareness that there are more issues that face students in larger urban districts than in smaller suburban, more affluent districts, and really to understand the needs of students from that perspective. And, you know, so a student makes a mistake, they get in a fight, maybe they have a little bit of marijuana in their pocket, maybe, you know, something happened that would, in another district, maybe result in a long-term suspension, a really severe disciplinary action, where in, as in a larger district, in a more urban district, there may be more awareness of where the student is coming from, and the deficits that they're trying to overcome. And, and I just remember the, you know, the, the Revere Special Ed Director saying to me, you know, they'd get expelled in another community, we'd give them an afternoon detention kind of thing, and we'd support them, we'd help them, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to knock them out, we're here to, to build them up and, and teach them. So, that's a difference I would see to, to your question.
Thank you.
Now I'll be asking the third question. Could you describe your firm's experience providing legal services related to personnel, labor relations, and collective bargaining in public education?
Sure. So, our firm actually started out as a labor and employment firm, that, that was the origins of our firm. And since then, that sort of has evolved into what our firm is now. You know, we are 30, roughly 30 attorneys in our firm. I would say that, you know, almost, at least two-thirds of the members at our firm do some form of collective bargaining and employment, advising people in the employment sector. I myself am what I consider a labor and employment attorney, as well as an education attorney. I actually came from a union background before I joined the firm. I was with the American Federation of State County Municipal Employees Assme for about four years, that's where I began my career after clerking for the judges in the Superior Court. It was working as a union advocate that I went and, and worked with attorneys from MHTL. And essentially, one of the former partners called me one day and said, hey, how would you like to come join us? And having worked with the firm, and having worked with all of the management side firms as a union attorney, I was thrilled at that opportunity, because I got to see how all the attorneys in our office, how they handled themselves in union negotiations. And they all handled themselves sort of in the same way, which is, they were smart, they were tough, but they realized that when it comes to collective bargaining, it's about relationships, all right? And you have to work with these people over and over again, especially when you're dealing with unions. So, to me, it never made any sense, and this is how I felt when I was a union advocate, and it's the way that I sort of still practice as a management advocate, is, at some point, I will leave, and you are all here as stewards of the school district, and you have to work with your union. So, I never thought it was a great idea to come in and, you know, the proverbial punch someone in the mouth today because I have the high ground, because tomorrow it could, it could change and be the other way. So, you want to work collaboratively with these unions, that's the best way that you can have a great relationship here in your school district for, for the kids. I think if you've got, if you're always fighting HR issues, sometimes the shift on educating kids gets pushed to the past. But, that's my philosophy, you know. When it comes to employment-related stuff in HR as well, Venetia is kind of a, you know, a two-way star here. She does the special education, which I know enough that if a special education matter ever comes up, I go to one of these people. But Venetia and I work in a number of districts, she has done some fabulous investigations, is one of the best investigators that we have, that come in on employment matters. And sometimes, you know, if an issue comes up, you've got to, you've got to investigate that before you take action. And it's great to have someone like Venetia who can come in on a day-to-day basis, interview everybody, write something thorough, and then work with your counsel on that, so.
And she likes doing it.
I love doing it. The investigations are, they take up a good part of my time nowadays, and I really do enjoy it. One of the things, as Mike just mentioned, is the thoroughness. I am completely dedicated to offering a thorough investigation, I believe that that's essential, particularly in this day and age where you have issues come up, and I feel as if, you know, staff and students are more readily willing to submit complaints when they feel that they're being discriminated or harassed. And that's when I come in, and Mike has sent me a number of investigations, even Mary Ellen, in which I've investigated and, from, from start to finish, and issued reports and my factual findings. And I've always had wonderful things said to me from clients about the thoroughness of the investigations, and how helpful it was to have someone to be able to come in and do the investigation, and they, you know, feel like it was, well, the report was well-written, and that was supportive of whatever decision that they ultimately ended up doing as it related to that student or that, that personnel.
Yeah, and just, you know, finally, I don't want to spend too, again, I know we've got more questions here. Yeah, you happened to ask me a question about something I'm passionate about and love talking about, but you know, when you're talking about labor relations and employment, I just wouldn't, it would be remiss if I didn't say that. You know, myself and any other attorney that might work with the school district, we all practice in front of the Department of Labor Relations. We know all the arbitrators very well, we know the Civil Service Commission, we're there routinely on a routine basis. I myself am on the Executive Board of LIRA, that's the Labor, Employment, and Relations Advisory Committee, it's a big labor matter here in Massachusetts. Our firm has more labor attorneys that have won the Management Side Cushing Gavin Award, I think, than any other management firm. I was fortunate, two years ago, to have that, that honor bestowed upon me. Arthur Murphy, Catherine Hesse, and the late Mike Lahane have also been recipients of that award. So, it's something that we do, again, on a daily basis, and we enjoy doing it. So, and finally, you have to give, when you're talking about labor, you have to talk about your unions, and I've already mentioned that, but we work with all the unions, all the big ones, we know them all, and we've got very good relationships with all of them, and that passes on as a benefit to our clients. So, with that, I'll, I'll stop talking.
Thank you. Could you describe your firm's experience providing legal services related to special education, student discipline, and general school law issues?
Sure. So, I guess that falls to me to start, and I'll yield to Venetia, she can talk as well. But as I mentioned at the outset, I've been, I'm, I'm the Department Head of the special ed firm, for Murphy, Hesse, Toomey, and Lahane, and have been there for over 30 years, and have really been proud of the work that we've done as a department, as a firm, over those years, in, you know, addressing, as I said before, you know, the various needs of various clients, and their needs do vary based on size, urban, suburban, and also even like, you know, Western Mass, Central Mass, Metro West Boston, South Shore, North Shore, Cape Cod. There's a little culture that's different in, in every one of those areas, but where we work in all of those different places, we have that, I think we have that, that sense of what, what the different areas of the state, how they, how they look at issues, how they, as I said before, you know, maybe how they address issues with students. So, as far as the special education work, we do whatever is necessary for the client. We, you know, the thing I do probably most of the time all day long is answer phone calls and emails with questions about the regulations, this particular case, we have this student, we have these concerns, we have these problems, and I provide them with guidance based on both kind of a review of the, the situation factually, and also an application of the law, the regulations, the statutes, the case law, all of that that comprises special education. And that's really what I enjoy doing very, I enjoy various aspects of my job, but I love that. We go to team meetings, and lately, those have all been on Zoom or some other platform, so that's been a shift, but it's okay, it seems to work out. Sometimes it works out, I think, for the better. Certainly, we can get from place to place in five minutes as opposed to getting in the car and driving. So that's a change, but it's a good one. And I think also, there has been almost a little shift in behavior, I think, with virtual meetings, that sometimes people are more respectful, I've noticed, than sort of getting down and dirty in the meeting and glaring and, you know, the body language. So, that's a good thing. So, team meetings, and then when cases are brought to the Bureau of Special Education Appeals, whether they're brought by our client, if there's a particular issue we're advocating for a student, or brought by the parents, you know, we cover the, the lot in terms of, you know, pre-hearing conferences, hearings if need be, mediations, federal and state court if necessary. In terms of other areas of the law that touch on our practice, much of our practice involves special education, but we also, tomorrow I'm doing a training on Section 504, actual in-person training for a change. So, we have a lot of 504, you know, trainings that we do, information that we provide, student record regulations, anti-bullying law, let's see, what else do we, we help folks with? Title IX issues, I'm sure I'm forgetting some things, but those are certainly all areas that we provide. Discipline, discipline's a big one. So, you know, whatever the issues are, again, we try to help the client understand factually how the case, you know, presents, and then give guidance on how to proceed. What have I forgotten?
So, similar to, to Mike, I actually represented families, so students and parents in special education disputes, and I was approached by one of the partners in the firm to come to the side of the fence and work, because I take it, she was impressed with my skill set. So, upon making the decision to come to MHTL and represent school districts, one of the major considerations for me was MHTL's reputation. And even in talking with colleagues of mine who were in legal services representing family, one of the things that they said to me is, if you're going to go represent school districts, that's the firm you want to do it at. And that, to me, indicated that MHTL is highly regarded and well-respected when it comes to special education representation, and that I, I'm here, so I ultimately made the decision to, to, to work for the firm. From my perspective, we are really great at collaboration when it comes to special education disputes. However, at the same time, we are respected as attorneys who will go to hearing and fight hard for our clients, and, and are willing to take matters to hearing when we feel we have a strong case. So, I myself have tried cases at the BSEA, similar to Mary Ellen. I've also done pre-hearing conferences as part of that process, and attempt, made attempts at mediation when a case seemed like it was something that would appropriately settle. Trying to think, trainings as well. I actually have a school discipline training next month, in about three and a half weeks. So that's something that's in really high demand with a lot of our school districts that we represent, especially now that students are back into the building and some are coming in and... coming in, and they, you know, seemingly forgotten some of the rules, and they need to, you know, get re-acclimated. So, school discipline is definitely a big one. I actually live locally, I'm not far, I'm in Boston, so if there is a need for in-person discipline hearings or special education meetings, I'm certainly very much available to come in person and handle those. However, as Mary Ellen said, a lot of our meetings have been virtually. It seems like it's just dependent upon what the family and what the individual staff member is interested in doing with those, but, you know, we're certainly willing to handle however the client would like the meeting to be held. I'm trying to think if there's anything else. I think that's pretty much it.
And as she's demonstrating, I was just going to say, we are available by phone. Text us. Is that a client?
Telling me to do something for a client.
We answer texts, we answer phone calls, we answer emails, and we love that, you know, to be able to get back to you, and people will say, you know, that's the turnaround, but it's really, thanks for that, it was good.
Thank you.
Okay, so thank you for coming tonight. My question is, you mentioned there's 30 attorneys working for your firm, so how does your firm manage having multiple staff representations working with one client?
Sure. So, I think what we have is, we've got a very collaborative approach at our firm. Let me start with that. There is no, this is my client at the firm, they are the firm's clients. Just so you know, our education law practice, we meet every Wednesday bi-weekly to go around and talk about all the issues that our clients are having. It's a great resource for our clients because it's a great way to save cost for your clients. When we have so many things that we've done in the past, it's a great resource to be able to bounce ideas off of people, so we're constantly collaborating. But to answer your question a little bit more is, generally what we have is, we have one or two people, especially when you have someone that does education and special education, that you should realize, those are your point-of-contact people. You should always, we don't want you to feel like it's a hot potato, but when you have a large school district like yourself, it can be difficult for one person to handle all of that. If you're in contract negotiations with your unions, and you've got eight union negotiations going on, it oftentimes is good to have one or more people doing that, just for scheduling purposes. But it all goes to what Mary Ellen kind of said, it's about accessibility, right? So, there's the one attorney that you should feel comfortable to know, look, if there's anything that comes up, this is who I can call that acts as sort of the gatekeeper. That person also asks, acts as the biller, so they're always reviewing every bill to make sure that you're not getting, that you're getting charged appropriately. Then from there, it's up to that attorney, the supervising attorney, to make sure that there's someone that can adequately staff your question. So, for instance, if you had a school building project issue that came up, and you called the meeting and said, hey, Mike, listen, we've got a school building project working on, we need some help with that. Well, I'll tell you, it wouldn't be the three of us that did that, all right? But we've got a town council practice group in our firm that has probably worked on every kind of public building project that you could ever name, including school buildings, from the start to the end, to sometimes jumping in the middle of things if you had to change representation, for instance. So, you know, it's that one person that you should feel comfortable to know, you know, hi, Mike, you know, this is what I've got going on, or hi, Mary Ellen, this is what we've got going on, or hi, Venetia, this is what we've got going on. And then from there, we kind of use our professional judgment to see what we can do. But we don't want you to feel, while it's collaborative, what we don't want you to do is feel like it's, you know, the attorney of the day, because that's not the case. And again, I said before how we've got a lot of, you know, what I'll call legacy clients, clients that we've done, this is the approach that we've done with these clients for years, and it's the ones that we try to do, we want to have a good relationship, we want to work with you, we want to come in at some point and find out what's going on with Lynn, how can we help you, and help you with your agenda, so. You know, that's it, we're very accessible, we all live with our cell phones, as you know, we can move quickly, we can find out as we're sitting in the parking lot that is on behalf now, and we can text right away. I mean, if that's not the best appetizer for accessibility, I don't know what else, so.
And as far as special ed, I think what you see is what you get here with Venetia and myself, we would, you know, be glad to do the work. Myself as a partner and Venetia as a highly esteemed associate in the department, so.
Thank you.
The last question. Okay, if a school committee member received a constituent call alleging that a particular school was acting in violation of an LPS or Lynn Public School policy, and the planned action was scheduled for the following day, how would your firm handle that?
So, just to understand the question, so, a report that something was going to be happening at a building the following day?
No, a complaint alleging that a particular school was acting in violation of Lynn Public School policy, and the planned action was scheduled for the following day.
The action, okay.
By the school, you mean? And then you said it's a constituent, that made the call to us?
Yes, made a call to the school.
The school committee. So, I guess the first thing I would think of is, who is in charge of that, whatever that, I understand it's a little general, which is fine, but.
I didn't write it.
So, whatever the, I get this question in special ed all the time, that parents will go to school committee members and say, my child is not getting served properly on this IEP, my child needs an out-of-district placement, my child needs this, that, whatever. And what I'm constantly, I don't want to not answer your question, but I can maybe frame it, and then we can look at what you're asking about. So, what I'm frequently, sometimes it's a school committee chair that I'm talking to, sometimes it's the superintendent, sometimes it's the special ed director, depends on who calls me up, or texts me, or calls me, or emails me. And what's important to advise the constituent is that, you know, you have a role, but you are not in the process, you're not like in the special ed world, you have a designated director of special education, they are your agent, that is specified by the regulations, by the law. So, they, so, we want to make sure that we reinforce the message that they are the ones who are in charge of this process. If there's a problem with their management of the process in special ed, there are places to go. There's the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, parent can make a complaint, they can file a hearing request with the Bureau of Special Education Appeals. If they're alleging some discrimination, they could file a complaint with the Office for Civil Rights. But we're not, you're not going to take that on as a school committee member, because you don't have the authority. And also, you don't want to create the sense that you have authority, because then you might have a line out the door, people saying, why should I go to that appointed person in the building, when I can go to the school committee person and go through the backdoor?
Well, I usually call Patrick.
So, that's the, I don't mean to not answer your question directly, but hopefully that's helpful. I don't know if it's exactly aligned with what you're asking, but that's, that is a question that we do get with some regularity, and honestly, I think school committee folks are honestly looking for guidance on that. They don't want to drop the ball, they want to be responsive to constituents, but they also don't want to overstep their authority. So, if that helps, that would be my.
Yeah, I would just, I would say, if you, so that's a good special education way. I think another, if you look at it from an employment context, and I'll use a real-life example that I had, which is, a former student went to a school committee member, sitting school committee member, and said, hey, I've got a complaint against one of your current employees, all right? School committee member then calls the superintendent, who then calls me, and says, what are you going to do? And so, I said, look, you've got a complaint, you need to investigate that, and here's how we're going to do that. And a call like that, again, as Mary Ellen had said, you know, that's when you've got to be careful, that school committee has a certain role, and that sometimes you've got to turn to your administration. That's when the superintendent and I would sit down and say, okay, how are we going to handle this? Who's going to be conducting the investigation? When is it going to occur? What steps do we need to take? Do we need to put somebody out on administrative leave? Are there any union issues that we have to have right here? Do the police need to be contacted? All of these things that you've got to get ready of. And then, do we need to somehow, depending on how big of an issue is, let the school committee know, just in case it's a public relations issue, do they need to be made aware of that? But it's, again, it depends on the, all that's a way to say is, it totally depends on the fact pattern, but in something like that, that's usually when you want to rely on your administration. And your administration has to have the comfort level with the attorney to say, okay, how are we going to handle this? And so, that would be how I would add on to that.
Thank you.
Yeah, I had a follow-up question. So, when I had asked, sorry, when I asked if you, you tell your experience providing legal services to committees in urban school districts and municipalities compared to Lynn, we have a very, very large diverse community and a large Latino population. We face challenging, you know, unique challenges. Are you familiar with those? Have you dealt with, you know, communities facing the same issues we have, similar?
Yeah, we've, I, the firm, I feel definitely has, based upon the diverse, diversity in our clientele. For me, I've seen it a lot in Somerville and Revere, where there is a diverse, you know, there's diverse communities within those cities. So, I'm often dealing with special education and social discipline issues within those communities. And then also, I do investigations for all of our clients who need them, but I also am available to do investigation in those areas as well, when there's any complaints of harassment or discrimination, or any other complaints of misconduct. I think that there certainly is a, you know, there is certainly unique problems to those sorts of districts, more so than other districts, and I feel that I certainly have the skillset along with all the other attorneys to handle the challenges that come along with those districts. And I've developed my skillset through my representation of students, as I mentioned in Lynn, also representing the students in Boston as well. So, I'm very much familiar with the, you know, larger urban school districts and the challenges that they have with respect to managing such a large amount of voluminous number of students within the classrooms and within the individual school buildings.
I mean, just the sort of the general thoughts I have are, you know, don't prejudge a situation, start with a clean slate if you're trying to determine this is really kind of the investigation, I should defer to you on that, Venetia, but, you know, take every case as it comes on its own merits, you know? Don't make a judgment before you really know what's going on. I'd like to say, I think, school personnel, school administrators, for the most part that I work with, come from that point of view, and when they come from that point of view, then you've got, you know, it's hopeful that the result, the work and the result are going to be fair.
And Mary Ellen, she has this great list, you haven't mentioned it, of dos and don'ts, which apply equally to all school districts, but I think that it also especially applies to larger school districts as well, and she's, you know, provided the list many times at various trainings that I've done with her. So, I think that's actually a great resource that we use collectively as attorneys when we're representing the school districts with respect to any matter, but particularly special ed and school discipline.
Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Member Capo.
Just sort of one of the questions, I'm not sure, I understand you guys are special education, so that's understandable, but it's, one of the questions we had was beyond the primary point of contact, who from your firm would Lynn Public Schools interface with? Like, who would be the, like, if the superintendent was calling, who would he be asking for?
So, if it was a general education or an employment-related matter, it could be me, it would be me. If it was a special education, it would be Mary Ellen or Venetia. Again, I know enough that if you called me and said I got a special education, I said, great, let me give you Mary Ellen's number right there. But any other matter like that, that would be me.
And one of the other things that we've, our past attorney was always here at our school committees, but if we needed to have somebody attend school committee meetings, who would that be?
I think it would depend on the matter. It's funny, I've got a number of clients that, it's funny, not all school districts want that, but more and more I've been seeing school districts that want that, and they like sort of the comfort of having an attorney there. I know the Greater Lowell Vocational Tech is one of my clients, and they like to have somebody there. Now, that stopped a little bit during the pandemic when they were trying to keep people out of rooms and I'd be available on Zoom, but if you need somebody there, it can, depending on the matter and what it was, you'd start with, if it was a general ed, or if it was an employment-related, that would be myself, or even a governance, you know? We haven't even talked about the governance matters that affect school committees, when you've got the open meeting law and the public records law, the state ethics law, these are all things that as a committee, whether you knew it or not, when you signed up for this job, you need to be aware of that. And so, you know, as counsel, we oftentimes advise school committees on these and come out and actually recommend trainings on these, because, you know, as public officials, those are the things that you've got to really be careful about.
Member Casianas.
I just have a little bit of a follow-up too with the question that I asked on number two. Just to give, the question was, could you tell us more about your firm's experience providing legal services to school committees in urban districts? That was your question, apologize. I'm remembering Penny's question. You know, you guys mentioned that you represent the city of Brockton, some larger districts. I initially, you know, it's great to have that experience, but then I think about capacity. You know, how do you guys maintain a capacity to take on a 17,000, like, we have a large district like Lynn, how do you guys maintain, you know, the quality of service? How does that look? Because when it looks like you're looking at Brockton, Western Mass, and how do we?
Sure. So, again, as I mentioned, there's 30 of us, right? So, it's not like I'm doing, Brockton is not my primary, I've done work in Brockton, but I've gone down and negotiated contracts down there, but right now, I don't do any work in Brockton because we've got other attorneys that do that. I will tell you myself right now, I am the primary contact for the city of Methuen, and have been so for 12 years or so. You know, I myself, I do the city of Quincy, I do all of their labor relations, but I do the municipal side, so I represent municipalities and school districts. Our firm does the city of Quincy. So, you know, we do that by, we have other attorneys that work there, and we spread that out, and then as we, as we grow and we're trying to grow, we have people that say, okay, maybe some of the younger attorneys can take over one of the people that I've been handling, and that's how we do that right there. And so, again, you know, you are a large district with, you've got a lot of students, and you have a lot of employees, all right? And you've got a number of unions. As I said, if you were going to be going into contract negotiations right now, you know, I might be the primary person that you start with, but you would want to have somebody else there to help out, you know? And I generally do the, especially when you bring someone new on, I'll take the larger, the tougher ones, your teachers, you know, but maybe you have someone else handle, I don't want to even mention any, some other group right here, because I wouldn't want to say that they are any less important, but, you know, you can kind of, you know, spread that out like that, so.
I just want to say too, in terms of the handoff to another attorney, I mentioned before, Venetia and myself who would work with you folks, and right now, we have the luxury of having only other, aside from Venetia, the other two attorneys in the department right now are partners. So, I, and I, to the extent that we have younger associates who work in the department, I'm really careful with the client, that I, Venetia can attest to this from years ago, but from when she started, that, you know, as excellent as they are, I don't want to give the client the perception that, you know, bye, I'm gone, you're going to have somebody that you haven't worked with before. I'm really careful to make sure that there's a relationship first with that, probably typically younger attorney who's going to work, but only when I hear from the client, oh yeah, she's great, he's great, whatever, you're good, you know, we'll call you when we need you, and then they tend to start working with somebody else. I make sure the client is really comfortable with that before. I wouldn't impose a change on you, you know, in determining who would be working with the district.
I appreciate that. I know you mentioned, you know, smart, tough, and relationships, and I think, you know, concern would be turnover while we do negotiations, you know? I think it's important to, you know, if you guys, you know, we do these contracts with the unions in full faith, and it's very important that our representation is building relationships, that we got to get things done. It's collaborative, as you mentioned, and it's difficult though when you, if you, and you're going to turn over to different attorneys, and leadership-wise as we collaborate, you know, and longevity too as well.
Sure. And you know, I happen to know some of the representatives that you deal with on a daily basis. I will tell you what I tell anybody anytime you're thinking about switching councils, is, we understand it is a big change for people, and what we wanted to do is have, you have a comfort level with us. We don't come in with our own agenda, as I said before, and one of the things we should talk about is transition, because this is something that we have some experience with. You know, coming into a new environment, one of the things that we always like to do, especially when we take on a new client, is come out and sit with them, you know? I say come out and sit with them, you know, whether it's Zoom, if people prefer that now, whether they prefer to sit in a room, we work with you, it's, we work with you. Want to come out and find out what's going on with you, what are your issues, what are the matters that you have? And what I always say is, we do that because we want to have a longstanding relationship, we want to find out. So, I usually say that when we're first starting off, the first 10 hours of that getting to know you, we don't charge you for that. Let's find out what's going on with the city of Lynn, all right? And then we can work on how your issues go from there. So, that is something that we routinely offer, especially when we're transitioning to a new client.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for the presentation. Are there any comments that you'd like to share that you haven't had the chance yet to share?
Well, I mean, I think we've, we've probably talked longer and maybe put you behind your schedule now than we have, but I want to really just thank you for the opportunity to come out here and tell you a little bit about our firm, and I think we would be thrilled to work with you and this great city.
I agree. I think your questions were excellent. I think, I looked at my little list, and everything I wanted to say was elicited through I think, I looked at my little list and everything I wanted to say was elicited through the questions. So thank you for that opportunity and ditto. We would love to work with you if you chose to retain us.
Yeah, I echo all the same sentiments as Mike and Mary Ellen, and thank you for having us. It's been a great opportunity to sit down with you and talk with you about the services that we'll be able to provide you.
Thank you so much. Thank you for being here. Wonderful meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Attorney Hall, thank you so much for coming. I am the mayor, chair of the school committee, and we welcome you this evening and thank you for your interest in the position. My colleagues will each be asking a question of you tonight. And we will also have time at the end for you to share any comments you have that didn't come up with, of course, the questions that you'd like to share. So thank you so much for coming and being here with us tonight.
Yes, ma'am.
I have your first question. Why do you think that you or your firm would be a good fit to provide legal advice and counsel to the school committee of the Lynn Public Schools?
Thank you. First of all, I've been doing this for almost 18 years now for a very similar-sized city, which is the city of Lowell. I've been the exclusive collective bargaining council and negotiator for Lowell for almost 18 years. And additionally, while I'd say I'm probably in the top 10 of experienced labor councils in the Commonwealth because of that, as you probably saw from the materials, I have little doubt that I know a lot more about operations than the typical school attorney due to my current role as chief operating officer of Lowell Public Schools, where I'm in charge of HR, transportation, cafeteria building, safety, and COVID, which impacts everyone's labor. Challenges now, I contend, labor law is extremely important because of the context that we're in and the dynamic. And because of that total of experience, I feel I'm very qualified.
Thank you.
I'll be asking a second question. Can you tell us more about your experience providing legal services, which you already elaborated on, to school committees in urban school districts, municipalities comparable to Lynn? Can you give us more, just a?
Right. And I'm a lifelong resident of Lowell, and not that really matters, but I say it just because I think Lynn's very similar to Lowell in regards to population, in regards to English-language learners, in regards to the transportation challenges and the labor challenges you have. And as I stated, I've been doing Lowell for almost 18 years. Before that, on active duty, I was an administrative and labor counselor, where I tried approximately 100 contested discharge cases before first becoming a labor counsel for Lowell Public Schools. As you also saw, I have board experience as well as all of you, having served as the chairman of the Lowell Housing Authority. Presently, I'm on the Veterans Commission. And I was chairman of Northeast Legal Aid, which has an office in Lynn for five years. Now I'm just a board member. But all that governing experience coupled with Lowell's litigation experience, and you've probably followed, we do have a lot of contested matters in Lowell going all the way to the Supreme Judicial Court or Appeals Court. And having been in fact-finding and mediation over a dozen times, that experience, I think, matches me. But I would say that I think one of the best things I have to offer is I'm highly respectful of our union partners. I think they would tell you if they asked you that I'm a good listener in regards to their arguments. And I truly feel that union input helps us get to a better solution at the end and makes both sides work for a better solution.
Thank you. And I have the third question. Could you describe your experience providing legal services related to personnel, labor relations, and collective bargaining in public education? Could you just go a little bit?
Sure. So in Lowell, for example, every two to three years, we have a collective bargaining cycle where myself and/or the superintendent would be the lead agent for anywhere from 10 to 20 sessions before we would ultimately reach mediation, where there'd be anywhere from five to 10 mediation sessions. Historically, we've ended up in fact-finding in a lot of those situations. But however, before all that collective bargaining stuff, there are grievances, as you all know, unfair labor charges, complaints, and litigation. And we've also gone all the way to the Supreme Judicial Court on several labor matters over the last 18 years as well. So I would say at least 20 hours of my week for the last 18 years has been spent on Lowell's labor litigation. The rest of my time has been spent on Drakett matters in regards to municipal law or litigation for the town of Drakett. I've also represented several labor unions as well. One is electrical workers and also a custodian union. So I do have experience on both sides, management and employees.
Thank you. Could you describe your firm's experience providing legal services related to special education, student discipline, and general school law?
So general school law, discipline, and collective bargaining, I think I've gone over that. I have about 18 years of experience in that. I'm not an expert in special ed law, but I am the evaluator and supervisor of Lowell's two in-house special ed attorneys. I think from my application materials, I didn't think we were the best match for Lynn in regards to special education law. And my material stressed, I think I potentially could supervise the billing or delivery of those through other attorneys. If you thought that we were a good fit, however, I wouldn't feel comfortable being the lead attorney. However, I do have a working knowledge from supervising and evaluating those two attorneys.
Would you like to talk at all about student discipline?
Student discipline, again, well, not again, that's handled by the two attorneys that I supervise, but I am familiar with the investigations and the hearings that we do. Those were handled by our Student Support Services Department. And when those students got counsel, my underling attorneys would handle those. And I would basically game plan those issues with them, but it's not a primary area that I practice in.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So my question is, how does your firm manage having multiple staff representatives working with the same client? How would you guys go about that?
So I generally don't do that. In Lowell, for example, there may have only been one or two occasions in 18 years where another attorney participated in one of those. I was on my honeymoon, so I really wouldn't count that.
Good thing you noticed that, right?
I did, I did review some files, which my wife wasn't happy with, but that was about 17, 18 years ago. The other one, I was deployed for a brief period of time, and I got back to the client the next day when I wasn't in military service. So I'm confident that I could answer all questions and deliver all services. I think the one thing in considering our candidacy that I'm sure you all have seen is whether or not you're comfortable waiting until 4:30 in the afternoon or four to hear back from me. I would suggest with any attorney in a private practice, or if you have multiple attorneys, you're going to have to deal with court anyway, or hundreds of clients that firm would be dealing with. With me, I would have under five clients in this situation. I would just almost nearly eliminate other business except for the two small unions that I represent and some estates and trust work. So I think I would actually be more responsive, but wouldn't be available generally during the day unless I took vacation time or planned it out a week or two in advance.
So it's safe to assume you'd be the primary point of contact. Would you be somebody that maybe would attend our school committee meetings as well?
Yes, I would do that.
And then, yeah, so I guess that's it. Thank you.
If a school committee member received a constituent call alleging that a particular school was acting in violation of the Lynn Public School policy, and the planned action was scheduled for the following day, how would you handle that situation?
To the extent possible, I would encourage that there be an investigation to document it. I would be nervous about public meeting law, potential violations in regards to discussing that in open session. So that would lend itself to wanting to have an attorney to handle those sort of issues. I know in Drakett, for example, we've used agenda items that say these are all reasonably anticipated agenda items, so there potentially could be some leeway to suspend the rules or treat it as an emergency situation. But again, I, you know, I don't like to create more issues. School districts like Lynn, I'm sure have more than enough stuff to handle, and I would lean towards being cautious in that situation. However, I do realize that elected officials do have to answer to the public and provide information, so it's always a very difficult balancing test when dealing with those two competing aims.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So is there anything that hasn't come up in the course of the questions that you'd like to share with the committee?
I think I've gone over my background in labor law and why I do think it's a pretty good fit. I would like to stress that I wouldn't just apply to work with any client. I do think that this community is a very good match with the issues that I deal with on a daily basis. And I've reviewed your website, listened to some of your meetings, I'm familiar with the superintendent's background in Mr. McHugh and that sort of leadership. I think lends to what I have to offer because I'm confident that rational decisions are going to be made and there could be pinpoint legal advice and analysis that could help the team. So I just wanted to stress, I'm not applying to every single opening that arrives. I'm really only applying to positions that I think are a good match. And I do honestly believe this is a good match due to its similarity with Lowell. And with that, mayor, I don't have anything else subject to your questions.
Thank you so much. Attorney Hall, thank you for being here tonight and for your interest in the position.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Very good.
Welcome.
Thank you for coming early.
Thank you for having us.
We appreciate it. Thank you.
See, you save the best for last, right?
Absolutely. So thank you so much for coming and for your interest in the position. I'm the mayor, chair of the school committee, and my colleagues on the school committee will be each be asking you a question. We will have time following the questions for you to share any thoughts or comments that you didn't get to cover during the course of the questions. And we are looking forward to discussing, so thank you.
Great, thank you. And I have the first question for you. Why do you think that your firm would be a good fit to provide legal advice, counsel to the school committee of the Lynn Public Schools?
Great, well, thank you. I mean, I think that we would be a good choice for you as your legal counsel because we have a lot of experience throughout the state, both in education law, but also with labor law. And a lot of what you do obviously deals with students, and that's very important in providing them with education, but you're also a very large employer. And so you have a lot of employees. We have a lot of experience working with unionized and non-unionized employees, and I think that that would be a big asset to you as your labor, as your school counsel.
Thank you.
Hi, thank you for coming. I'll be asking the second question. Could you tell us about your firm's experience providing legal services to school committees in urban school districts and municipalities such as comparable to Lynn? And do you have any examples, can you give us, that you have?
Want me to start, or maybe we could take turns? I'm Tim Norris, by the way. So we have experience, you know, providing, we have Cambridge Public Schools as one of the school districts that we provide legal advice to. We provide labor law advice to a number of cities and towns, cities like the city of Worcester, the city of Woburn. And, you know, so we, you know, we do, and we also have, you know, many, many different school districts that have different, you know, organization. We represent a lot of vocational technical schools that have, you know, some complicated political structure and funding mechanisms.
Also, city of Haverhill, we do labor counsel for as well. So in terms of school representation, you know, I think that probably some of our vocational schools districts would be the ones that probably most match in terms of larger urban settings. But we do represent cities, schools across the state, so there's a mix.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have the third question. Could you describe your experiences providing legal services related to personnel, labor relations, and collective bargaining in public education?
Want me to take that one?
I do, yeah.
So I've personally been involved with over 100 teacher negotiations, you know, both, you know, not in 100 different school districts, but, you know, 100 different contracts, sometimes, you know, three or four contracts for a given municipality. And, you know, in the course of doing that, you know, also handling grievances and unfair labor practices, organizational disputes. I'm probably one of the few attorneys in the Commonwealth that's negotiated a number of first contracts for teachers. So, you know, soup to nuts, I'm negotiating a bunch of first contracts for Greater New Bedford Regional Voke because they've just unionized down there. I negotiated an initial contract for Essex Tech, which is up here in your neighborhood, when they had, when they merged North Shore Regional and Essex Aggie and created, you know, a hybrid unit of teachers. So I've been involved in, you know, in long negotiations and short negotiations, and then, you know, all the litigation that surrounds both organization of a bargaining unit, grievances, unfair labor practices and the like. So, and we've also interfaced with school districts that have a variety of models in terms of what they do in-house. So some school districts have their own in-house counsel, and we're sort of, we serve as the expert to the expert when it comes to the things that, you know, they might not, you know, know on a day-to-day basis to the same level that we do. You know, we've, we represent a lot of school districts that have in-house human resources capabilities. And so, you know, we can adapt ourselves to, you know, sort of the level of expertise present in the school district. And in a big school district like this, you know, our expectation would be that you would have a high level of expertise within your, within your administration.
Could you describe your firm's experience providing legal services related to special education, student discipline, and general school law issues?
Sure. That's the majority of what I do probably on a day-to-day basis, is handle questions that come in from superintendents and principals. We know whether it's a student discipline issue, a question about a law, a policy question, or, you know, something that's posted online that they have questions about, they want to walk through the process of what they do with school threat situations. And then I also handle a lot, as does Tim, but a lot of the special education questions. Or we'll sit in, if it gets to the point where the parent is bringing an attorney with them, I will sit in, you know, at team meetings and then go all the way through to a hearing if that becomes an issue, or a settlement conference, or just handle day-to-day questions. I'll review an IEP if the team has a question about the IEP services that they're offering, or to review a file just to see whether or not the team is kind of on solid ground in terms of what they are presenting at this, at this point. So the day-to-day questions that come from the staff in the school buildings, the administrators in the, in the school buildings, those are the individuals I usually work with on a daily basis, providing those services. So we do have a lot of experience with that. And it kind of, it's something new every day, and it's always different. So it's exciting to be part of. Never a dull day. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for coming tonight. Mike? My question is, how does your firm manage having multiple staff representations working with the same client, in this case, obviously Lynn Public Schools?
Do you mean multiple staff in terms of our?
Correct. In terms of your firm, right, right.
Well, what we try to do is we try to have one person be sort of the leader, in this case, you know, Melissa, to organize what's coming in and be that initial point of contact. Now, obviously, you know, life happens, and, you know, she might be in a hearing or something else, and that's where we have a backup. But, you know, we try to have that, you know, that main point of contact be the person that, that sort of manages the services and, and parcels out the work. We have three associates. We actually have another associate since we submitted our proposal to you all. You know, a gentleman by the name of Ian Keefe, who, who has 10 years of experience as an attorney and worked in-house at Boston PD doing labor and employment stuff. So we have, you know, really qualified folks, and, and what we do is, depending on the, the level of complexity of the assignment, we'll, you know, we'll either do it ourselves or do it in conjunction with one of our associates, and, and we supervise, you know, pretty carefully, you know, to make sure that you get a top-quality product.
Okay. And then just a follow-up to that. So beyond the primary point of contact, would there be someone from your firm that Lynn Public Schools would interface with other than the point of contact? Or, for example, maybe some that would attend school committee meetings if needed?
Yeah. So I think the answer to your question is yes, and it also depends on what your preferences are, because we have some school, school clients or city and town clients where you have one point of contact, and that's the person you go through, and that person would be the person coming to your meetings and doing that. We also have some clients where we kind of split up in a way, like Tim does have more experience doing contract negotiations than I do. I do them for a lot of clients, but he has a lot of experience in that realm. So sometimes for a client, he will handle the contract negotiation piece of it, and I'll do the student services, special education, student discipline, policy part of it for the client. So in that case, you would have two people kind of working, even if one is the primary, depending on the question or what the issue is, then you would know you could go directly to that person. And a lot of times, we take our cues from the superintendent and how, you know, or the school committee and how they want to structure this. So sometimes everyone has to go through the superintendent in order, before they even get legal services of any kind. So I'll have, I'll get this email, you know, from a principal that's like, I already checked with Dr. so-and-so, and they said I could contact you about this question. So the answer to your question is it kind of will depend on what you are looking for, but yes, we can set up a model that will work for you and for us. And just to add to what Tim said, communication, I mean, we're, we stay in touch about clients, even if we're handling different things for a different client, you know, we can shoot an email and just say like, hey, I had a conversation with so-and-so when I was there, and they just mentioned this, wanted to make sure you knew, you know, what was going on in this case. So we stay in touch with each other as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. If a school committee member received a constituent call alleging that a particular school was in violation of the Lynn Public School policy, and the planned action was scheduled for the following day, how would you handle this situation?
So you're saying a school committee member?
Like, I got a call from a person that was alleging a violation in our policy and was being acted upon the next day.
Right. I mean, I guess, you know, off the top of my head, I would say that that would be something that should go to the school administration as an initial matter, and that wouldn't necessarily bubble up to us unless the school administration didn't know how to handle it, because that would be their, their responsibility as an, as an initial matter to make sure that the policies are being adhered to.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure thing.
Thank you. So are there any other thoughts or comments that you'd like to share with the committee that you haven't already had the opportunity to share yet?
Sure, I can, I like to hear myself talk. Let me say a couple things. So let me just, you know, I don't envy your, your position, because it's, it's really hard to choose legal counsel, especially when everyone's wearing masks. But I'll, I'll mention a couple of things about my background. I started my career in the Marine Corps. I've worked for a big law firm in Philadelphia doing employment litigation defense. I did some education stuff for the Philadelphia Public Schools, as well as the Archdiocese of Philadelphia. So I have a lot of different perspectives on education from that. I've, you know, I've been in Massachusetts, working for, you know, over 20 years. I have over 30 years as an attorney. I can't believe I'm saying that, but it's true.
It's not as funny with the mask on.
Yeah. I know. So, so, you know, I, you know, I have, I have a lot of, of experience working with different school committees and working with, with different school districts and looking at a lot of different issues. You know, the, the job that you have, you know, with not enough information really to, to make a good decision is a difficult one. You have to trust your lawyer. That's the bottom line. And it's really about, you know, how do you feel about the people, you know, sitting in front of you, giving you the legal advice, and, you know, and do you trust, you know, what their background is? Do you trust what their judgment is? And, you know, that's a tough decision to make, and I wish you the best of luck in making it.
And I'll just add that when I started practicing law or thought about going into practicing law, I was really focused on the labor aspect of it. And since I've started, I've become more interested in the education part of it, and my mom is a retired teacher, a retired English department head. I have a sister-in-law who's a teacher. I have a lot of educators in my family. And, you know, even though we're kind of on the other side, being on the management side of things, I think it's important to have that perspective of what is also happening on the other side. And, and so I've always been kind of surrounded by educators, and I think that perspective is important, and I enjoy being able to help either a special education team, like, work through a problem with how they're providing services to, to a student, how to, you know, deal with a family, you know, working with the educators who might be having like a difficult time, the administrators who are facing like challenges, especially in the last two and a half years, but even before then, obviously, there were a lot of challenges. But between staffing issues and the amount of stress and just like the hard work that everyone is putting in on a daily basis, like, I think it's very important to try to support the people making those decisions and running your school. So I really enjoy my job, and I really like doing this. So I think that helps, you know, kind of get through all the hard work and, and help support your team. I think that would be something I'd like to do, so. And you also have a lot that you've been doing at school committees. I've been at many school committee meetings until 11:30 at night. So I know that you, we're not going for that tonight, but I know that you're also working really hard.
Well on your way.
Yeah.
This is early.
Yeah. Yes. I did, I, you know, we were talking a little bit, and I guess just, I don't know how your current structure is in terms of how you use legal services, if you had, could share that information, like what you look for in a legal team, I think would be helpful for us to know how you currently use your legal team.
Well, I mean, I'll let any other member chime in, today says that they have thoughts, but we are, we are, we, for, for a very long time relied on a lawyer in the city of Lynn who passed away last spring, who will be impossible to replace, and by any stretch of the imagination. But we have been getting assistance from the city solicitor in the interim, and are conducting a search now.
Okay. Gotcha. I'm sorry about that.
Member Gailey.
And he was our right-hand man.
Yeah.
Like, he knew this district inside and out, and all he had to do was pick up the phone, look over there, and ask him.
And ask him, okay.
And he, he was always there for, I believe, every member and the superintendent, if you had a question.
Wow.
So it's very difficult to find that kind of relation. It's like you said, you have to trust your lawyer, you have to know that he's doing the right thing for you.
Yeah. No, and that's, that's tough to, it's tough to recreate, and it sounds like you had a great, you had a great situation. I'm sorry that that happened.
Thank you. Well, thank you so much for joining us this evening and for your interest in the, in the position. It's been wonderful meeting you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Having any questions or need any more information, please feel free to reach out. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good luck.
So that's it. Michael. Yes, Jared, Michael, and that's the third.
The mayor.
Oh, McGee. Geez. That's right. I wonder if they're like. So I think we'll get, we'll get married a second and come back in here to wrap up As we mentioned at the top of the meeting, there's, there's one more candidate for an interview that we're hopefully going to schedule for Thursday before our meeting. We need to confirm the time with that, that candidate, and the secretary of the school committee will be in touch. This is, this is, as you have seen, on the agenda for this, the school committee meeting, so we'll, you know, ideally be prepared to make a decision on Thursday. Does anyone have any? Yeah, Member Magnolia.
So does that mean that the other candidate has not continued with their RFP? I don't know if I'm supposed to say the person's name or not.
The eighth, yeah, right. We have not heard from that candidate.
Okay. Thank you.
Right. The, the other candidate who submitted an application who we've not scheduled for an interview has not gotten back to us.
No, because unfortunately, we just made the decision tonight to extend them the invitation, so I'll be reaching out to them tomorrow morning.
Right. But the, there was a, there was an, there was an eighth candidate that.
They never responded.
Correct. And I think that was Member Magnolia.
Oh, I'm sorry. I misunderstood your question.
That's okay. I just want to make sure that's it.
Yep. That's what it was. Yeah. Member Dugan.
So my question is, the discussion about the attorney, would that go to executive session, or is that public part of the meeting?
Well, we'll convene with Attorney Markopolis to get some official guidance on that.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yep. Great. I just want to thank Secretary of the School Committee, Mary Julis, for helping us coordinate all these and doing that live tonight to move the schedule around. So thank you for that. And there being no further business, we will accept a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Member Papiano?
Yes.
Member Capola?
Yes.
Member Dugan?
Yes.
Member Gailey?
Yes.
Member Magnolia?
Yes.
Member Penyon?
Yes.
Mayor Nicholson?
Yes.
adjourned.[1789.51]